All right, I'm going to call to order the Town Sherburne Select Board meeting of November 7th, 2019. And I'll ask our Assistant Town Administrator, our Town Administrator, to read the agenda.
First, we need to amend or approve the agenda. We have one recommended amendment. Another period of public comment, and then a consent agenda considering payroll warrant, meeting calendar, then consideration of Town Administrator items, and there are three items. Temp interim fire chief appointment recommendation, affordable housing monitoring agent appointment, and intermunicipal agreement with Holliston regarding sustainability coordinator. Consideration of Farm Pond Advisory Committee S-PAC items for burn repair, possible warrant article in fiscal year 2021 budget. Under routine business, Finance Director report, Town Administrator report, selectmen reports. And then a period of executive session, under two items in executive session, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the Chair so declares, library. And then MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, section 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a negotiating conversation with public property, name of property with Holliston.
Thank you. One recommended amendment?
The one recommended amendment was submitted by the tax collector, or the collector, Nancy Hess, requesting a confirmation of an appointment of Pam Douse as assistant, temporary assistant collector.
We'll put that in. I guess we can put that in after, after the...
Before routine business?
Yes. So do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
I would move, before we do that, I'll move to approval with an additional amendment. I think we need to post, four of us are going to be at the Veterans Day celebration on November the 11th, so I think we need to post that. I don't think we need any discussions, but just for full.
Meeting can post it. It's an event that you probably can't even post that.
You don't think so? Okay, well, then I'll move the, approve the consent agenda as amended.
All those in favor? Excellent. So we have one public comment. Mr. Higley?
Hello, my name is John Higley, 14 Saddle Brook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. I just wanted to update you. Back in May, the Select Board authorized the testing of Jamison Field, and I just wanted to let you know that this test Tuesday was tested. We had some delays in getting a consultant onboard, and then we had to work around weather and schedules and things, but the consultant, Board Health Agent, were very cooperative with their schedules, and it was done this past Thursday. This is a six-step scope of work, and this is task two. Task one was to review the data, review the site information. Task two was to do this testing, and now we're looking at, are there next steps? Do we need to do additional testing or evaluation? The consultant will then prepare a report, and then there'll be a public meeting. So we'll come back to you when we're ready for the public meeting. That's the update. The testing was done in a way to minimize any impact. Recreation was contacted and worked through, so the scheduling worked out well for everybody. So that's the update.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you.
There was a note that perhaps we should discuss scheduling for January.
Yeah, I actually, thank you for bringing that up, Paul. Diana, David, we should look at the calendar for the spring, from January through town meeting, I would say. So at our next meeting, we can approve those meetings, so we can log them on our calendar. I think there's also, you had the 21st and the 5th, but I think we're planning on having a meeting on December 19th as well, right? If needed?
I think we did have it.
So I think, maybe put that on the next one as well. And then we can vote on whether that works. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of Town Administrator Adams' temp interim fire chief appointment recommendation. Last meeting, we had, we appointed a subcommittee of sorts to do the interviews, or no? What is it? A team?
Town Administrator.
Okay. Advisory group. Advisory group to interview the candidates, and they have a recommendation for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding temp interim fire chief.
Did you speak to the microphone?
Regarding temp interim...
Still can't hear you. David, Rick?
Public player here.
Regarding temp interim fire chief, the Board requested that the TA assemble an advisory group to help the TA review the applicant's abilities.
Still can't hear him.
We can't. Microphones are not working.
I'll just talk louder. Regarding temp interim fire chief, the Board requested that the TA assemble an advisory group to help the TA review the applicant's abilities, and to return to the Board with a recommendation on how to proceed with an appointment. The TA pulled together a team consisting of one member from each of the following committees: Select Board Chuck Yan, Personnel Board Vicki Relis, and the Public Safety Committee Michael Goldstein. The technical expertise of town resident who is an experienced full-time firefighter in a larger neighboring community, Mark Roche, was also asked to participate. The group met with each of the applicants and discussed their interest in the position, availability, experience, and departmental vision. The team discussed the pros and cons of each applicant. The team was unanimous in their advice to the TA in that either of the applicants can do the job, but since the existing popular full-time chief has made a recommendation, there were no significant findings that would justify not accepting the fire chief's recommendation on how to proceed during this transition period. So the recommendation is to accept the fire chief's recommendation to appoint Zach Ward as temp interim fire chief for a period of up to one year while the process to fill the position permanently is undertaken.
Thank you. I think the, you said the committee was unanimous in this recommendation? So do I have a motion to...
Is that true? The committee was unanimous?
Excuse me.
I'm just trying to...
Okay, yeah, I just, we were discussing up here. So he said yes, that the committee was unanimous. So do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Before we do that, can I see the fire chief here? Just asking to tell the public what his recommendation was?
Sure.
Chief Kenny, I'm the correct fire chief. I put together, after a lot of thought and just, you know, looking back over my three years here, you know, working through and getting a pulse of personnel within the department, and, you know, just working to try to really put up together a proposal or recommendation that was truly in the best interests of the department, looking at it objectively, and, you know, looking at the credentials, looking at, you know, the contributions and the things that, and the capabilities. It was my decision and my recommendation that Zach Ward take on or be the interim or acting fire chief until such time as, you know, full-time replacement could be found. And there's, you know, the credentials was a big piece of that, as well as, obviously, Zach is very much familiar with the inner workings and day-to-day operation of what we do, also has been intimately involved with the budget process, you know, working on the OSHA compliance piece of it, and, you know, working on equipment acquisition and things of that nature. And there wouldn't be a, wouldn't be much of a transition or a learning curve with that. And, you know, in the best interests of the department, that was the recommendation that I submitted to the Town Administrator and to you all, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Could we, excuse me, could there be some comments from...
We had comments the last time, and we have a unanimous recommendation, so...
Can I, I mean, I honestly feel like this, people should hear, you may have made your decision, but I think that I would like to...
Well, I mean, we haven't made a decision yet. We're basing it on, we're basing it on a recommendation from the committee.
Then may I stand up and speak?
What does the Board think? Should we, I...
I would say public should have a say.
Okay, fine, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
I'm Charlotte Giovanella with Dean Farm Road.
Can you put on the microphone, please?
I did write a letter to the Select Board and Dave Williams, which I heard back from two of you. Thank you for responding, that you had received my letter of concern. I'm very concerned as a resident and as an experienced firefighter and paramedic for the last, firefighter for nine years, paramedic for 20. From his own admission, and this has nothing, this is nothing personal towards anybody on the department or Zach himself. I don't know him, and I'm sure he's a very nice gentleman. But per his own admission, he has never been in command of a fire. He's never been in command of a fire. I don't, I don't, I don't expect you all up here to understand what that means, because you're not a firefighter, you haven't been inside a burning building, you haven't been, you know, put a hand in front of your face and you can't see it. And this is a very, very important position. It's not only about credentials, or about, you know, what is on paper here, or the fact that you might be good at administration. I mean, that's what we know, he has a safer grant to do that. I believe he should do that, and I'm sure he's very good at that job, and has worked well with the existing chief. But as somebody in the fire services for 20 years, to think that you are going to put a young man who has never been in command of a fire, has probably been in less fires, he might have been at a fire, but been inside a fire, less than the fingers on my hand, is shocking. He's coming from a call department where he was a call lieutenant. He's never been on a full-time department. He's now here in the Town of Sherburne, and quite honestly, nothing happens here. There's a regression of skills in this department unless you work somewhere else. I was on this department, but I was never, this was never the only place that I worked. I've been on 2181, that's Milford Hospital paramedics, Metro West NADIC paramedics, Norwood Hospital paramedics, Norfolk Fire, Millis Fire, and Sherburne Fire. And it is absolutely unbelievable that you... I don't understand the chief. I'm speechless as to why he would recommend somebody with no experience, and I don't understand that.
Okay, thank you. We did receive your letter, and thank you for making the comment.
Well, I just think that, you know, as a taxpayer and knowing that, you know, this is, this is our town, you're all living here, God forbid there's a fire and he's in command because he does not know what he's doing, he doesn't have the experience.
Thank you.
I have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion or further discussion?
Are we done with public comment? May I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Pam Douse, 100 North Main Street. Obviously, I have a very personal connection to this matter, but I also retired 20 years from the fire department. I was an EMS captain on the department for a very long time. I do have a couple of questions as to the process that went on. I know that, that the committee had a difficult time in choosing. So when I spoke out of turn, asking if it was unanimous, I want to make it clear that it was unanimous not in the decision to appoint whoever it was, but it was unanimous that they couldn't come to a decision, so they came to the chief's recommendation.
Wait a second.
I'm trying to clarify, that's all.
I'm just saying, the members of the committee are sitting here saying they're unanimously recommending somebody, so don't, please don't...
That's what I'm trying to clarify. Was the decision unanimous, or was the decision that the committee could not come to a conclusion on their own, so they went with the fire chief's decision?
No, it was unanimous to go with the same recommendation that the fire chief had.
Could the committee come up with their own decision? Did they come up with choosing Zach Ward?
Yes, but it's...
Okay, so is that what you told John?
When I met with him earlier today? Did I tell him something else?
I think so. But that's my first question. And the second question was, was any of the core officers of the fire department spoken to? About this process? Did anybody talk to any of the captains, the lieutenants?
Yeah, I talked to several people.
The process decided in the last...
Did you talk to any of the captains or the lieutenants?
I talked to several people, and several of them asked not to be identified, so I'm not going to go into the details of what people said. There were folks who supported each candidate, they were positive about both, and your characterization of how the decision was reached is absolutely wrong. It was a unanimous decision.
No, I'm not, I'm just asking for clarification, that's all.
Well, excuse me, I'd like, you want a clarification? I'll give you a clarification, because I was there. It was a straightforward decision. Both candidates were strong, had strengths and weaknesses. To characterize it as a difficult decision is not at all accurate, and I don't know where that comes from. But you obviously were not in the room.
Right. But David was.
And I was.
Yeah. And so I guess my question is, I know from being a Town Hall employee, which I'm very happy about, by the way, thank you, is that we get employee evaluations every November, and I know that when Chief McPherson was chief, that he, he did those very religiously, and I don't know if that's still the case. It just strikes me as somebody that has been deputy fire chief for so many years and on the department for so many years, that if he's not qualified to step in and carry the department for a certain amount of time, why wouldn't he have been notified that by his current chief, that he wasn't capable? So again, I'm just very concerned, and our town runs, you guys know this, our town runs on volunteerism. And between our family, just my husband and myself, is over 50 years, never mind every other Douse that's been on the fire department, in town boards and all that. So I just urge you to really look in, paper doesn't mean everything, and just really kind of evaluate. We have a chief that was here less than three years, and he's leaving, and you're going to take his opinion on who should take over, who's known John for less than three years, and who's known Zach for less than a year. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So I'd like to ask, if David or whoever's on the committee, to relay the discussion, because it does come up about experience, and, you know, to some extent it's a valid point. Well, we actually asked a local resident who was a full-time firefighter, that be a technical expert on this, I don't know if he's here, but maybe we could get an idea of what that discussion was as far as technical expertise and experience. Is that fair to ask?
I'm missing that. You want to talk to...
Well, he's saying Michael Minn...
Maybe one of you two that was on the committee could just give a brief summary of what the discussion was about technical expertise and experience.
It was more of a discussion, there weren't certain questions that were asked of each one. It was a discussion that some of us didn't even understand between Mr. Roche and the candidates. But you asked us to put a technical person on there, that person's name was mentioned, he was more than willing to help, and they talked the fire stuff. We talked administrative and organizational stuff.
Eric, there was a discussion of not just qualifications, paper qualifications, prior experience, how many major fire events, where they had responded to fires. The interview with each candidate lasted probably 45 minutes to an hour, and there was an extensive discussion. David's characterization is right, some of the discussions that, I can't remember, it's Lieutenant or Roche asked, were highly technical.
And here's one of the votes to go with the chief.
Yes.
I have, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the, of the group and appoint Zach Ward as the temporary interim fire chief. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Zach, and thank John. We appreciate, I know he's not here, but if you could say thank you to him as well. Next on the agenda is affordable housing monitoring agent appointment for an indefinite term. So we'll just have to flip through a couple of papers here.
That's the 2B item.
Yeah, just get into it.
May I read this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Affordable housing sales monitoring agent in anticipation of another unit in town becoming available, I'm requesting that the Board vote to designate the Town Administrator as permanent monitoring agent, so that when a unit's sales comes forward, the TA can begin processing with the assistance of Town Council. Instead of waiting for the appointment for a single-unit sale monitoring agent appearing as an agenda item each time for discussion, the designation would streamline and expedite this process. Since 2013, the TA has been voted monitoring agent each time an affordable unit is going to be put up for sale, and I think that's five, five units. Included in this packet is the process we follow each time as recommended by Town Council. The TA would serve as monitoring agent until the Board decides to appoint a different agent, such as Town Council or another employee.
So if I could make a comment. My other towns hire contractors to do this, and I'm going through this process in another town, and the outside monitoring agent is very good, and it doesn't have all the restrictions that comes with the Board of Selectmen having to take votes and to make motions and to get involved with any of the process. They have an outside outfit, an outside outfit does monitoring for many, many different units in many, many different towns. They have all the resources, they know what they're doing, and so on. I think the town should consider having a regular professional outside monitoring agent for these, this particular facility, but perhaps other facilities in town that come online where there's housing involved. I think it's, it's just a headache to do this, and where you have people who do this nine to five, you're much better off with that. Short term, we ought to have a monitoring agent, so I'm going to support the motion that the TA serve as the monitoring agent, but I'm making this little speech to suggest that we try to transfer this responsibility to an outside agency after some looking.
Can I...
You're going.
Yeah. I would not fight to keep this on my desk.
I had a feeling, David, it was like...
Yeah, it is cumbersome, it always comes up at the wrong time, and every time we, since they, it doesn't happen very often, we have to relearn the process every time.
It's horrible, every time.
So...
Okay. Well, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great idea, Paul. In the meantime, we'll point him until he can get this outside monitoring service in place.
So I could bring them back, and you could name them at that time.
Exactly.
What's the cost of hiring those services?
I don't know.
I don't think it's much. I spoke to Town Council, and he made the same suggestion, that we hire, he would recommend somebody, actually, he had somebody that he recommends.
And how often does this occur? I think over the last five years, I can only think of two, maybe three.
Two or three, maybe.
We had like five, they might have fallen apart, but...
Yeah, we had, obviously came forward, and decided to, yeah, we put all the work...
Right, where they start the first steps.
But there are other developments coming online, or being constructed, and some of those housing units are going to be affordable housing units with deed restrictions and all the rest. So the burden is only going to get worse and not better. And the fact that it happens randomly in an overextended period of time means it's very hard to preserve the expertise on doing this. So what, what an outside outfit might take an hour to do will take our staff considerably longer. I was going to say days, but...
It is.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kind of good use of their, our resources and their...
It's also nice to, it would be also nice to have an outside party as opposed to, we've been put in awkward situations trying to process this stuff.
Paul, did you say you have a motion then?
Well, to, to appoint, to adopt the recommendation of the TA, that he serve as monitoring agent for the time being, but also to look into and bring back to the Board the possibility of having one of these regular monitoring agents.
But to clarify, Paul, that would be as the permanent monitoring agent until we change it?
Yes.
I would second that motion.
Can I ask a question before we go? Paul, do those firms, do they, in addition to monitoring, do they then counsel you on how to follow the process if a situation arises?
They do everything. I mean, the last one in another town...
So my guess is they make up their money on the consulting, so they maybe even do the monitoring almost like a lost leader to get businesses, would be my guess, you know?
Spoken like an experienced consultant.
Yes, exactly. Once you get your foot in the door, I want to take your watch and tell you what time it is.
All right. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Now on to item 2C.
Item 2C is the memo of understanding with Holliston regarding the sustainability coordinator earmark. The Holliston Town Administrator and I crafted the attached language. I submitted it to our contact at MADEP, who in turn forwarded it to their General Council for determination of whether the language met the language of the legislation. We received an email back okaying the language, and I sent this to the Holliston TA last Friday, and the Holliston Board voted this language and signed the MOU on Monday of this week. I recommend the Board vote to sign the MOU and request that the TA now post the position following our personnel admin, following requirements on our personnel admin.
Just for a summary of what the language is, between the Town of Holliston and the Town of Sherburne, it's that the 50,000 earmark would be split, sorry, split equally between the towns. I think that's the most important piece.
Can I read through it quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Select Boards of the towns of Holliston and Sherburne hereby mutually agree to enter into this memorandum of understanding. Pursuant to Chapter 41 of the Acts of 2019, it is mutually agreed that $50,000 shall be divided equally between the Town of Sherburne and the Town of Holliston for the purpose of hiring and funding sustainability coordinators in each town. The funding will go towards the coordinator expense incurred by each community with a directive to the coordinators that they shall communicate, explore, and cooperate on sharing opportunities, which includes projects, grants, outreach, et cetera, to benefit both communities.
Excellent.
So my only comment before the motion would be that I was hoping to have an opportunity to meet with the Holliston Board and to see if we could coordinate better on this issue. And I never heard anything further on that, so I never did have such a meeting. I don't know if any of my colleagues had such a meeting.
No, I think when they were here... I think when they were here, at least one of their members was very clear that they really didn't want to hire somebody together and the best solution was to split this right down the middle. We have our job description complete, which we voted on two meetings ago, I think. So I think this is the best way forward and.
We're considerably further along than they.
Exactly. So now we can post the position, we get half the money, and we're ready to go. And we can put this, move this forward and hire a sustainability coordinator.
Well, actually, that's, we're going, stepping one back one second, is have we built the state or whatever we have to invoice to get the fifty thousand? What's the step?
I think we have to sign this letter first.
Well, when they came, they like, it sounded like we have position description and this would do it, would it?
And then you can, you can request the money from the state and then we give half of it to Holliston, correct?
Right.
Yeah, they'll, they'll issue one check to us.
That's the two, let's do that. Let's get the cash in the door.
Yeah, so when I kicked the language to the CFO to see if he was okay with it, he kicked it to their general council.
Okay.
And then there was an email that came back saying that it met with general council and also the bill sponsors, so I don't know who they talked to on that.
Well, I thought in that email trail, there was also some discussion about how to submit for the reimbursement, the.
Yeah, the reimbursements. I mean, we already have the great documentation in there, so it's just sending them this final thing, you know, the agreement that actually says what the two communities are going to do with the money and then it will be sent.
Sounds good.
I would move approval. Before we vote, I wanted to pass on kudos to you, David, and to the TA in Holliston. This is a very simple, straightforward MOU and I know you got approval from the state pretty quickly. David Linsky certainly emphasized how important it was to get this MOU in place so the fund, so that we didn't lose the same funding, so.
Right.
This process has taken longer than any of us wanted to do, but this, this piece of it happened quickly, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just remember to remind him, he'll be there on Monday at the Veterans Day, so that's.
Let him know that we've signed this.
Yeah, it's just, they bring your checkbook on Monday.
All right, so chuck me in the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? So David, how do you, do you have like a original version that we should sign? Okay, great. So if you could just pass that around, we can sign that. Now, the next item on our agenda is Farm Pond Advisory Committee.
Hi, Catherine Rockio, sixty Harrington Ridge Road, Chair of Farm Pond Advisory Committee. And we, I wanted to come to you, a couple of members from our committee are here as well, as a conversation for possibilities and maybe some direction from you. Does everyone know about what the berm in Farm Pond is?
If you just want to give a quick update.
Oh, it's hard to give a quick update. There is a structure that separates an area of Farm Pond from a lagoon area sort of behind the pump house. I don't know the exact latitude, longitude of it, but there's a lagoony area that actually has inflow and outflow. Outflow to the Charles River, inflow from sort of a higher area. That area is separated from the rest of the pond. If you look at an overhead map, there's a straight line, you can see it. It's, it was built like a hundred years ago to stop muddy water from input, going into Medfield Hospital water supply. From the naked eye, it looks like the bank of a, you can't even tell necessarily that it's anything other than an edge of a pond if you're standing at the beach, but that's what we're here to talk about. There's been lots of conversation over the past three years, going all sorts of different direction about the berm, whose it was. I think it's been determined strongly that it's owned by the town of Sherburne, the structure itself. Then we were trying to understand the importance of the berm. Is it a dam? No, we don't think it is. Is it a, what's its value, it's different than its value when it was originally built? Again, built to prevent mud from getting into the pipes that go into Medfield State Hospital. Now, we have, after many years, two or three, I'm forgetting how many now, the importance of the berm is to keep the sediment. It's a physical barrier keeping the sediment from that lagoony area from the rest of the pond. There's concerns with years of phosphorus and all sorts of things. Weeds maybe, but that's not really what this is about. It is not an impenetrable barrier. The water seep flows over it often at the spring, but this past year, most of the year, it seeps through it. But it is a barrier. We've had limnologists, we have friends of Farm Pond who are chemists, we have botanists who have all weighed in on this and the, the feedback very strongly was that it did have an important function of separating the sediment. So as a result of many conversations, Farm Pond Advisory Committee felt strongly that the berm should be maintained. We went and talked to, we came up with some recommendations, we vetted them several times on the meeting notes from past spring with butters, with other interested parties about how should it be maintained? We took input from everybody and we came up with a recommendation. Actually, we revised it several times, but finally went before CONCOM in the middle of July with our recommendations on that the berm should be maintained, that the berm should be, you know, permanently have sort of some level of line item somewhere in a budget and on people's minds. If everybody in Farm Pond Advisory Committee got hit by a bus, that people would remember the berm, that is our legacy, you know? And so the CONCOM said, do a notice of intent, which we are working on, but that's, we thought it's time to get you guys to come into this because actually it's your notice of intent. I mean, I'm representing you. So in addition, we dragged, we have a very willing person in Sean, it's a labor of love if you're working here, and we dragged him to berm to see if maybe, we're talking about maintenance, what does he think about some of the maintenance that would need to happen on the berm? And right now it's filling in holes. Over the years, the rock face, there's rocks that have tumbled off of it. There's a burrowing animal, probably, I mean, in the, in the past six months, a beaver lodge has been built on the berm that wasn't there last January and has since been built. So we took Sean out there on Monday and I think, you know, he got, he has his opinions on whether or not that it could be sort of something that the town could, with their own staff, could sort of maintain in terms of fill of the holes, in terms of kind of keeping the rock face intact. So that's where we're at.
Question, I know Pat had called me from Farm Pond Advisory just when we had a conversation a week or so ago, I think, and my question to her and I guess is, rather than patchwork, because I know we've patched it in a number of times, is there like a, is it potentially like a larger capital item where we really fix the berm so it's in a sturdier position than just filling the holes here and there? And I, I want to do it right once if we can, if that makes sense, then.
I think.
Or is it just an ongoing maintenance issue?
There's two sides to that. I think there's a lot of appealing, people who feel don't disturb it too much, do the bare minimum you need to. There's apparently historical pitch pines on there that don't exist anywhere in any of the east coast of Massachusetts, east coast, eastern area. These trees that are on the berm are important. We got that feedback. We got feedback from people who want the, it's sort of to be sort of woodsy on the berm. We fought, we had lots of conversations about the trees on the berm. I think, I, I don't think that's our recommendation to you. We did not say cut it all off, like start over and rebuild the berm. I think that would be a significant project.
Sean, I'd like to hear, I know Melinda, if you guys wanted to speak first, but I wanted to hear what Sean thought after his visit.
Yeah, just, so Melinda O'Neil, I'm an APHON and on the FPA, just to tag on to what Catherine said, we're also in a process of figuring out how to maintain it, so I don't want to walk away from your idea down the road. Could that be a recommendation that we say we have to follow through on? It's always possible, but absolutely at this point in time, we feel like we can maintain it going in this direction.
Okay.
I had a question about, about the berm is it, it is not that wide and I've always been concerned about, is it white pines or pitch pines that are on it?
So both and red maple.
And I've always been concerned, you know, they're fairly shallow rooted and if they go over, they could be real damage to the berm. So where, where did you all end up? I know it's gone, it's zigged and zagged.
Yes, it's zigged and zagged. Actually, the recommendation in, in, from springtime meetings was not to do anything but to prepare an emergency action if it did uproot, so we could fill the berm. Actually, the recommendation from the arborist said probably going to split, and actually one did split. This, there's now one last pine on that berm and it actually did exactly what he said. He didn't topple, it didn't unearth the root ball, it crashed down onto the berm itself.
Like along the length of it.
Yeah.
I mean, it was like a ridge.
Perfect.
Couldn't have been more nick, nick lines, yeah. There's pictures of that and we were learned, so yeah, very interesting that that's what happened. So our plan, the way we wanted to, I mean, this is under the jurisdiction of conservation, so we couldn't like go and take a little bucket of sand and fill it in illegally, you know, but that's why we wanted the notice of intent with the proper way to fill it with the appropriate soil and that sort of thing.
So you said before, it's been, you've looked at it and that town does own the berm?
Yes.
Does the town own the budding properties or do you have access to the berm? Like what's the access rights to get to this, to maintain it?
Good question, yeah.
I think there's an easement, but.
There is an easement, yes.
There is an easement. The assessors don't quite have it right right now, and we're looking into why that is, because we took over the easement from the state.
Yes.
Back in, I'm not sure.
So it was part of the.
Twenty ten maybe, oh seven.
Part of the legislation that, that helped write. So when we wrote it, we included not only the pond, the waters of the pond, but we also specifically included the easements. And one of those easements goes to the berm. I think it goes.
Runs right past it.
And past it, yes.
So that gives us access, so you can access it and whatever else you.
Yeah, we'd have to button that up a little bit better. If we ended up with a, with a work plan that we would need to manage, because you still, the easiest way to access it is a private road, which goes to two eleven, two twelve, two thirteen and four, there's four or five houses there. When you drive down their driveway off of Farm Road, you then drive across the pipe, there is a place to park a couple of cars and then you, you can walk out, you could actually wheel something out on the shore of the lagoon, which is, which was built when they put the pipe in to Medfield State.
This questionable access rights, property rights, if it's not black and white. It also further goes to why not, not make a larger capital project out of it, so it'll be very disruptive and these kinds of maintenance things also, I think it would be easier for seed by the butters. My second question is, maybe it's not about the berm, but you mentioned the pipe and so on. Is that pipe filled or is that pipe able to be used?
So that pipe, we, a couple of years ago, cut that pipe as it crossed Forest Street because it still was connected to Medfield State.
That's what I thought. Went onto the river.
Yeah, and it, it's still with gravity feet. We spoke with contractors at work on the demolition of Medfield State when D Cam was cleaning it up and it was pressurized on their end. They, they capped it live, but so we disconnected it at, there's still a hydrant at Forest Street in front of that new house. That hydrant is now the end of the line.
Okay, good.
And it works well.
So how many trees are there on the berm now? If one came down, I'm trying to recall, three or four before?
Yes, we have an exact, I, geez, I don't know how many, five, maybe?
There's a bunch, well, here's the list, right?
Yeah, we have a list. Jim Campbell gave us an exact survey. So the one that came down, I don't know, he told us which one it was. So one is missing.
Google Earth actually has a pretty good image of the berm.
You can't miss it when you look at it through Google Earth. And Jim told me which tree it is in terms of the, which tree has gone down, so.
So, so what do you, I guess, what do you expect the annual maintenance on this to be and what do you propose budget wise? I know as they're making budgets, where should this, where should this line item fall?
We were hoping it would fall under Sean, but just something that would, that was our first thought. I mean, Pat, I'm just going to say, Pat LeBlanc has been really shepherding this through a lot of energy, constant effort of it. She was driving us forward, but I think the thought was it should be in someone's line, you know, someone who regularly assesses something.
The DPW.
Yeah, that's our dream.
Paul, I mean, Sean, does that, does that, does that. Does that work for you? I guess, what do you think after being out on the berm and all that?
I don't think it needs much work.
Okay.
It's not defined right now, obviously. They're still generating exactly what it is that's going to be in that notice of intent. I think it's important to have a plan for if something happens. The ice could bust through, it hasn't happened yet, so I can't imagine what, one of the trees could uproot, that does bother me, but it's probably about as much work to remove one of those trees right now from that berm as it will be to go in and fill the hole. It's not like Farm Pond's just going to empty it, the berm, it self levels. A little bit of mud might flow the other way, but that would only actually be in a drought that the mud would go the other way. Because the pond is.
Usually higher.
Normally higher, it flows through the lagoon to head towards Willis's farm.
Okay.
So that would be more work than what is needed even now. There's not much work, there's maybe some clearing and brush so that you can easily walk. There's some pretty small holes.
There's a beaver lodge.
There's a beaver lodge.
Is that going to compromise the berm? Is that?
We're taking some steps to.
Right.
We can't really have, we were hoping not to have burrowing animals on the berm, so.
Pat, I know you had a.
As an ongoing expense, you'd want to have animal control monitor that twice a year, spring and fall. And then I would think one of Sean's guys or Sean himself would go out there and check it out, the same thing, which hopefully wouldn't be a lot of money. But the animal control was probably three, four hundred dollars to take care of it.
So I guess, Sean, as you're making your budget, will you include this berm maintenance as a line item?
I can, I mean, it's, it's not a real number right now, but.
Right, but I think.
It's also.
That's what we're looking for.
Pleasantly surprised at how little work it appears it's going to need right now. Obviously, if something drastic happened, I can't cover that.
And the Farm Pond revolving fund, would that have, like, does that have enough money in it or is that something that could be used in the emergency situation where if one of the trees fell, they have the money to immediately repair it?
I mean, I'm sure we have it. I think there's some discussion about if that's.
Big enough in the revolving fund, if we needed to have a tree taken down or something.
Somebody rapidly shoveling dirt into the hole, I guess.
Right, because that wouldn't be a regular maintenance, that would be an extraordinary item, but.
Right.
If we have that revolving fund as kind of a backstop, we wouldn't, you know, we also have the town reserve fund, obviously, if it was a bigger item, but if we have the Farm Pond revolving fund that kind of, we know it's there in the emergency situation, that I think that's a good thing.
Right. And the other thing to your, to your question is, we still need to sort of do our homework and, and make decisions about, you know, getting those repairs in and then putting together that plan. And then after doing that work, I think we could circle back with you and say, hey, this is what we learned and we have an idea of what it would cost, just so you would be aware.
Does anyone else have questions?
I was only going to say, you gotta talk to the advisory people because they, you know, anytime we increase the budget, they're going to tell Sean his budget's going to be flat, so we gotta make sure they're aware.
This is, this is a new.
We added a new item to the budget, okay?
And I mean, Sean.
Keep them honest, Sharon.
Yeah. Just make them aware that this is coming and, like you said, if it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be a huge number, so. But it's an easy explainable.
It's just to identify separately.
Right. And I think that's the thing with advisory, yes, they want flat budgets, but if there's an easily explainable new line item issue, then, then that, that's why they have the piñata.
So I guess I'm the only one who hasn't spoken. I would say, I don't have a question, just more of a reaction, which is, we should support Farm Pond. It's our responsibility to maintain that pond. This looks like a small item, we're talking, what I've heard so far is a couple of thousand dollars, around a couple of million, a couple of thousand. I'm sure that in a budget of twenty million, we can find a couple of thousand. I think we should do everything we can to maintain the quality of the pond. And the berm is an important piece of that because it does maintain the clarity of the water. And for those of us who swim there, would you rather dive into clear water or do you want to dive into mud?
Is that a motion?
So I guess the motion would be to accept the recommendation of the Farm Pond Committee.
Yeah, I don't think we actually need to vote on anything. I think it's just.
Conversation for possibilities, yeah.
And they're going to work on the budget with, with DPW.
David's been very helpful. We're going to also work on.
And with Sharon.
Notice of intent.
And I'm glad you're thinking of this now and not having to change the budgets come February more.
That was Pat's advice, yes.
I'm glad that you guys are doing it now because this, this makes the budget process easier if it's planned well ahead of time.
Great.
Thank you. All right, our next line item is the amended item where appointment of the, what's the, what's the exact title? David?
Assistant tax collector, Sam Oat, Pam Dowse.
What is this? Assistant, I just want to say it right. Assistant collector.
It's temporary. It's temporary.
Assistant Temporary Collector?
Collector, right.
Okay.
Assistant...
Do I have a motion to appoint Pam Douse?
So it has assistant.
All those in favor? Thank you, Pam. I appreciate you, your service.
You can get the order of the titles however you want, temporary, assistant, temporary.
All right. Routine Business Finance Director Report.
Just, I handed out some, some reports that are coming out of V D A R. Moving along with the automated budget process, advisory should be coming out with their guidance end of this week, beginning next week. But, you know, things are shaping up. Next Tuesday, V D A R's coming out, and we're having our kickoff of the conversion to quarterly and moving on to their platform, so lots of things going on.
Thank you very much. For Town Administrator, or did you have something?
I had a quick question. Sharon, for those that are spreadsheet challenged, can we come to the V D A R session?
Um, you, you certainly can.
Is it an overview, or is it going to be a very technical?
No, this is a really technical session.
You don't want to be there.
Really tied into...
Thanks.
David? Yep. Just two quick things. The C O A Assistant Director position will be posted tomorrow, and will be open until November 18th at noon, and the Governance Committee is meeting on Veterans Day at 5:30, and they tried to avoid it, but they have to do it. So at 5:30 on Monday, they'll be meeting in the Police Department Training Room.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any selectmen reports?
Yes.
Paul?
Just want to pick up on something that Chuck mentioned at the beginning. Veterans Day is Monday, and this is an event to honor veterans. Oh, you already have the program and everything. Do you want, do you want to carry on for it?
No, please, this is...
The public is invited. It's become quite a well-attended event. It's all very moving. Most of the members of the Board are going to be present.
Sorry. My daughter will be singing in the chorus, in fact.
There's, there's a guest speaker. Please come.
Our state senator and state rep come. David Linsky's been there every year I've been there, and he's always there.
Great. Any other selectmen reports?
We're giving you lunch, too.
Any other selectmen reports?
On the library, if you want me to give you a quick update on our public library session, and you've probably seen some of the progress. They did pave the west side of Town Hall, so that's better for the plowing this winter and access. They're going to open up some more parking spaces next week, I believe, as a result of the paving, and take down some of the fencing. Probably also noticed they've removed most, if not all, of the masonry already, so we've made progress on that, and we're, as I mentioned, through K P, we'd hired a separate surveying firm, so that we're very close to having the new design, which had to accommodate the as-built condition of some of the parts of the building that aren't quite in the right place, but we have to adapt to that now. So we're hoping that the new masonry will follow forthwith. So that's the goal, it's, it's still optimistic, but the goal is to still get it sealed by winter if we can, so, although it feels like winter now, I know, I know. But, you know, they, after all these months of discussion and everything, in four days, they got the masonry down, so, and it was clear, one of the things that was clear, you know, was a good decision, because there are large sections with no insulation behind it, which you couldn't see prior to removal. So we had the owner's project manager provided his representative to take pictures during the process...
Great.
To record some of the situations there, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we're now going to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
George, a couple of quick things.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. Wearing my old recycling committee hat, what's happening to the old bricks? Because it's not a huge area, but...
It's 1,500 square feet roughly of bricks. They're pretty, I walked out, I did a tour there last Monday night, it's pretty intensely covered with mortar, so you'd have to do a lot of work to get the mortar off of it.
Yeah, I was looking at one of the dumpsters, and just want to add one other thing to what Paul said, the guest speaker this year is a World War II veteran, which is at the Veterans Day, and there are fewer and fewer of those folks around, so...
I know, I know.